We have some meeting minutes to approve, uh, that's from our December twenty eighth, two thousand fifteen. Recordly scheduled council meeting. There's directions, we need a motion to have both approved.
I'll make the motion.
Motion on the floor by Donnie, can we get a second?
A second.
Second by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, agenda for this evening. Scott has one addition, I know for sure, that's one he just handed us, it is a resolution for greater Minnesota cities. So, okay, with you guys, I'd like to put that down on the bottom. You have a last item on the agenda?
And then I just wanna ask, we have a discussion about the cable access channel.
Good. Put that written in.
Does Galen have something?
Yeah, we'll get to Galen right over here.
He's always on the list, that's why I'm asking you're doing additions.
Oh, no, I don't believe he loves.
So I'm asking.
She'd have a section for business owners right up top.
Well, I thought maybe just a section for Galen, see, there we go.
I'm not that long.
I don't think we get him to come every meeting.
Only when I'm in trouble.
Galen, if it's okay with you, we'll put you right on top, so you don't have to stick around if you don't want to.
Uh, that's, I appreciate that, we have a meeting at seven thirty elsewhere, so.
Oh, let's make it on eight fifteen.
That would bother me.
Is there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, I need a motion to have the agenda approved.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Gina.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Galen, good evening.
Good evening.
Wanna bring a chair and come on up, you can certainly do that.
Sure.
Gina.
Present my case? Oh, it's all official. Yeah, as you're aware, we all land in the city limits, and, um, I had two guys burning wood up their brush fire, we're clearing out some of our lighting bins, and we were informed that that is not, that's against city policy. And I didn't realize that, I wasn't there physically, however, I take responsibility because it's our property, you know? So I've asked you for a permit or a confession or a fine or...
The fine's gonna be huge if you wanna confess. Donnie gotta give you an absolution.
So, that's why if you're too, uh, like I said, we didn't do it, or I didn't do it, actually it's not, but I can understand if I do it, the people see it and say, well, I wanna burn my brush.
Yeah, it's basically the city's, city's policy is that we allow recreational fires, for very obvious reasons, you know? It didn't have to be setbacks from structures and things of that nature, I think when a policy was really drafted, we probably didn't give a whole lot, 'cause I drafted the policy, but I'm a chief. Didn't give a whole lot of thought to, you know, you have it, well, he's got how many acres of agricultural within the city?
Yeah, it's thirty plus, thirty-four.
Galen, put a couple of chairs around it and then it's a recreational fire. Little beanies and marshmallows?
You're welcome, whatever you have.
But, um, I, I would say, you know, I certainly wouldn't have a, a problem with it, you know, it's definitely gonna be a council thing. The only thing I would ask, Galen, if you're gonna do that, something like that, is if you could do the majority of the evening, and then maybe wait until you guys get like a south wind or a...
Right.
Something like that, so it wouldn't be a nuisance to somebody.
So keep it to a minimum and try to do it once or tw- or whatever.
Whenever you have to do it or whatever.
Do we need to go through the fire chief?
Brian is aware of it, um, I talked to him about it as well.
Brian Boeser?
Yep, yep, Brian is aware of it, and I will actually give him a call tomorrow, and just let him know, and it just, it, it all came about, it was complaint generated, so...
Yeah, right.
Somebody makes a complaint, we have to, yeah, we have to deal with it, so.
Yeah, the thing, when you do burn it, I mean, it's very good to let Brian know, he can call the county, because people call in fires on cell phones, and then all once, they have to dispatch the department, well...
Yep, so, yeah.
So you prefer evening?
Well, i- if you can, I mean, I know sometimes if you start, it's when you're burning big brush piles and stuff, it's hard to say, we're gonna start it at six and it's gonna be out by eight, you know, it doesn't work that way, but...
So probably just communication will be best.
Yeah.
Call Brian Boeser.
Yeah, or I can call Brian for, Galen, are, is your number in a book?
Yes.
Okay.
But he needs to call Brian, sit and say, hey, Brian, I'm gonna burn today, blah, 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 kinda thing.
Yeah, I'll give, yeah, I'll give Brian a heads up, so he knows.
But I gotta call Brian, even, so I'm kinda the middleman here, you know, because, um, I'm not doing it physically, I mean, Brian, and then Mike, I think, are two exercise centers, they have wood boilers and they...
They're taking the good wood.
Right, I don't have any heat for the wood, so they, I said...
Just burn it, little top something, the brush, your branch, it's still hot.
Because I wanna square off that, it's going in quite a ways into our property, just to make it look nice, and, um...
Sure.
So, but that was my plan, and I tried to, Danny Ross, cutting it all and make a nice clean white dent, but he, he said, I wanna leave this half alone, so... But whatever, that's, you're gonna have to burn it to their own, but, uh, but no, I will comply with city...
Yeah, I mean, that way, Galen, it wouldn't be a nuisance to anybody and other, I don't know if anybody on the council would have a problem with that, but, um, no, absolutely, uh, from my end, and I'll give Brian a call tomorrow morning for you, and just have him hook up with you, and if he's got anything beyond that, didn't sound like he would have, um, I talked to him, yeah.
You know, people have cell phones, they can call quite rapidly and pretty soon it's like, you know, who is it, where is it, why is it on?
Right, yeah, and I mean, we've got the three inches of continuous snow cover, so, you know, I don't think you need any other permit than just pulling through Brian, so, um, he can write you a same permission for that.
I just don't want you guys to get in trouble, because next time they'll come and say, well, he's burning, that's why can't we burn ours?
We got tough shoulders here, we just come back.
At that point, no, we say, because you came in and talked to us, so, that's why.
Okay, well, I appreciate it.
I mean, that, but, no, let's go, I don't see where we have any...
And thank you for giving me the time.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, we appreciate everything you've done for us over the last couple of years to go along with this, and greatly appreciate it, so... Yeah, like Stephanie said, if you wanna, a couple of people to hang around the fire, and if you wanna bring the wieners, we'll come.
Are you kidding? Make it steak.
Well, thanks for your conversation, that's what's up, you know, anyways, that should...
Thank you, Galen, you appreciate you coming in.
Thank you for listening.
Uh, next item on our agenda is Independent School District four eighty-four, which is our school district. Here, several months ago, I approached the school district with the thought of maybe kicking in and helping us fund, um, some of the police department due to the time and the volume of calls and things that, that we get. And it's a very good response, uh, from the school district. Really appreciate, uh, them coming forward and helping us out with this. You guys had a chance to read through the, um, the agreement on there, um, for X amount of hours, uh, and it's actually set up, um, as to where, you know, we'll, we'll give them those amount of hours, um, if something would happen, as to where we have emergencies and things of that nature, can't give me exact amount of hours, they understand that. It's, uh, it's a lot of in-classroom training, helping out with the fire drills, um, fire prevention things, um, it's a whole array of things that Eric is involved with there, that, um, you know, lockdown procedures, things of that nature, so, um, the school district was good enough to, um, contribute, I believe, forty-two hundred dollars for the year, is that the amount? Okay. So, what I would ask the council is that we approve entering into this agreement with, uh, Pierce School District.
I'm gonna make the motion that we enter into a service contract with, uh, between the city, uh, Pierce Police Department and Independent School District four eighty-four.
Motion on the floor by Mike, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Donnie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. I'd once again like to thank the school district for their understanding and to, uh, and to help us out here, so, just wanna make sure that they're all aware of it, because I know they've done a lot of, a lot of work, and a lot of discussion, uh, things of that, put into this, uh, contract, there's a lot of work, and, uh, without their, um, understanding and commitment, we wouldn't have been able to, uh, to help us out, so, thanks again.
The second page talks about compensation, what is to, should we set a date or time for that, or how?
I was gonna leave that between you and Eric, however you guys wanna structure it, after this, the year, before, during, unless the council has other ideas, how you guys might wanna do that, um, I guess it works the way...
Ask for it when he wants to cut the check.
It says it started, according to the agreement, it started on August first, two thousand fifteen.
That's on the school's calendar year, so...
Yep. Whatever works, yeah.
Let you guys hatch up then.
We have our two thousand sixteen annual designations and appointments, we pretty much left everybody where they were at. If anybody has admirations about being on something that you're not, or doesn't like, where they're at, tough luck.
Yeah.
Just kidding, you guys, no, that's, uh, you know, um, why don't you, uh, check with, check in with Scott, he can get ahold of me, or get ahold of me, um, but, let's, uh, at least for now, get this approved, we can always sort something out for what, do we have to get this approved this meeting, we can do it next week, too, can we?
Can we just do it? I make a motion to approve the designations.
If you guys are okay with it, absolutely, there's a motion on the floor.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Stephanie and seconded by Mike, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
Only thing that I've been brought up by a couple of people, uh, was, uh, you know, we have a list, the, uh, for how much for whatever, all this fees.
Well, this is the next, this is the next one.
Yeah. When, the fee schedule, um, can we come up with, and I'm looking at Scott, and Daniel would have to do, the park stuff, I get asked by people, you know, what's the rate of, uh, shelter renting, or, you know, camping?
Do we have a rate up here?
Yeah, do we have, can we get a rate sheet posted up here for the park facilities? And I, I'm sure Daniel's got one down there, but...
Yeah, just have him, uh, bring one up, that way, I don't know, Scott, do you have one here?
I don't, I don't, usually.
And I would be, you know, people have cornered me and said, you know, how much is camping, and so...
I don't know.
It'd be kinda a nice thing to put it on the website, too, you know, for the...
I think it is on the website, 'cause I pulled it up for people that, yeah, I pulled it up for people that work in on the website.
Big green fees and everything on there?
I, 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 green fees, where I know camping is on there, and I know...
Well, it should be just all...
Memberships, memberships, all that stuff, all that stuff, that way...
Yeah, we'll just, uh, make it...
Well, one of the things that was brought up before Christmas is, people would like to buy a membership for somebody for Christmas, and, you know, Daniel's not, well, the guys are there, you know, we should be able to sell it up here, and have that list up here, and...
That's something we kinda talked about last year.
I would say we've never been, I guess, and it doesn't mean we can't change it, but because of the year ends and the whatevers, is that we've not ever been able to, because we used to do that for my dad, how many millions of years ago the guy has been gone, and we'd have to wait till they opened in March to get it, even though we did it for, you know, it was an IOU Christmas present every year.
Yeah, and you should be able to, as if we come up here and buy that membership, um, any time of year, I mean, uh...
But then it's...
Yes, but, the thing is, just, wanna make, we have to make sure everything's coded and runs through the N, then runs through D, et cetera, so it's a process.
Yeah, right.
But if anybody calls or requests or anything, we automatically get the information from them, so...
Okay.
But, I mean, we can, we can post stuff visually, visually up here, as well.
Okay.
It'd be interesting to ask Daniel how that works on books, if you bought, you know, if you're buying your green fees, and I don't know how it works, you know, does it go to last year's, does it, it should really go to next year's, but it's being bought before two thousand sixteen, so then it's causing...
It would be a, it would be a two thousand sixteen.
Bookwork trouble, too, which is why I think they haven't in the past, but I don't know, so, I...
Yeah, it would go on, it would go on to two thousand sixteen, as far as our revenue is at, as far as that part goes. Okay. Yeah, we'll call Dan and, if I forget Mike, being a...
Well, we can talk about it next part, but...
No, that'll be till spring.
Christmas is over, so, it's...
We can call him and get something.
Well, no, you know, there might be people that'll come in and buy even a birthday or...
Absolutely, and they're great, they're great gifts, they really are great gifts, and you can't figure out what to get somebody, you know, or have an avid golfer or something in the family, so, it's really a nice gift, so... We have our fee schedule, um, if you guys get a chance to take a look at that, coming up, and I don't believe there's been a whole lot of changes to our fee schedule, but the only thing that I can think of right off hand is our patio fee, and our two AM license fee, otherwise we left everything alone, just got...
Correct, except on, what was it, September, where we changed electric drains, updated those.
Yeah, electric drains, yeah.
Believe in the past year, last spring, I think Bob and I really went through the majority of it, 'cause it's mostly related to public works, and we changed a lot of stuff and updated a lot of things, too, so it should be fairly up to date.
And looked through it, I thought it looked good, so I will make a motion to approve and set the twenty sixteen fee schedule for the city of Pierce.
There's a motion on the floor by Mike, can we get a second? Seconded by Gina, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. One call now, automated city communication system, Scott, what do we got there?
So we talked about this, um, prior to twenty-eight, uh, the last twenty-eight, and then the twenty-eighth meeting, um, last meeting in December, um, and he wanted to give a little bit of information, more of costs and things like that, there's no upfront costs, which was requested, and there's no other different hidden fees for signing multiple people up or changing people and things like that. So I guess that should answer those other two questions, just to touch base on, if you have the second page, um, where it has call credits and total price and price per call and things like that. At a maximum, what we were thinking between spring and, um, calls during, um, like, Bob's gonna be removing snow on Main Street and making people aware that they can't park from two AM to six AM, or after two AM to six AM, um, but, overall, we came up with a total of around twelve to fifteen thousand calls, so that gets us around that fifteen hundred to eighteen hundred, give or take, of a cost per year to, to the city. So, we'd fall in that twelve cent bracket, I don't, I don't ever foresee us going to the eleven cent per call, now that's, you know, if we're ever gonna get up to twenty thousand calls, but, one call would be approximately seven fifty.
They say, Scott, how long it'll take to set something like this if we decide to do it?
No, it doesn't sound like it's, it's that big of a process, though. Is this what the school has also? I believe it's one caller, I don't know for sure, we talked about it...
School reach, for some reason, sticks in my head.
Something reach?
School reach.
School reach, okay. There was some different things where it was only like, systems for schools and things like that, which qualify for more different...
How about for people that don't have landlines anymore, how are you gonna get everybody's cell phones?
It'll, um...
If you've got an electric bill, you have a phone number.
So every, you know, we would have to deal with what we have existing right now.
Yeah, people just have to be aware that they're gonna have to come in and register their number, we don't have one.
Correct. Right now, we're already getting cellphone, uh, home phone, cellphone, and emails, so, and all three of those are classified for what we would need, I'm assuming that a lot of, and actually, I don't think it's... The text messages are free, a lot of emails, and some people might automatically just want that one, so, um, it's gonna function, obviously, the cost, but, during the process of when we sign up an electric, we'll count, or if it's outside of our electric, whether serving garbage and things like that, we will still, we still put in permission of those three forms of information.
My thinking about that, we just recently covered our, our landline, and I'm sure when we signed up for electric, you have our old, um, tune-in, I think.
Yes, but we s- we put in, like, all that stuff, uh, so I'm as- I'm assuming that we probably have your email and cellphone as well, too, otherwise, you know, yeah, but, if they don't have it, we'll have to, by the way, for them, they're gonna have to kinda get on the bandwagon and help us a little too for getting the information to us, but, um, from here forward, though, obviously, is the most crucial.
Right, right.
Maybe what we can do, too, is, um, we can send out a letter to them and, uh, just inform everybody that, um, at least somebody, everybody has that information, so if they wanna get registered, they're gonna have to come in and get their, get their, um, contact information on our list, so, um, I don't know, I think, I think it's a neat deal, depending on how it's gonna pay for it, you know, whether you guys wanna make it fee-based, or whether you want to, you know, include it on the taxes, or, you know, I guess those are discussions we have, I have, you know, so...
I'm really looking at it.
Because I think it's part of services we provide to our citizens, so, you know...
Fifteen hundred, like, approximately fifteen.
It's not, like, it's...
Well, I just, you know, it's, to me, it's like you, you need to get the information out to the people, you know, are you gonna, yeah, you've got fire protection, you've got police, but to me, it's, you gotta get it, to, to charge them for that, too, I, I think you're already taxing them for it.
It's part of the service. You know, I noticed, when I was out of town here a while back, it might have been a week or so ago, and I just can't look at you guys, you're not in the fire department no more, but, there was a gas leak in town or something, came across my phone, you know, those are instances where I think the call, that should go out to the residents.
Correct.
You know?
Even when we had the issues with Philamene's a year ago, things like that, I mean, that was prior.
But to me, it's, it's part of, part of the service you're paying as, as a citizen, and, and your taxes are ready to charge you now for what, I guess, I think it's part of the service, I don't, it's that we should be charging them additional for that, but that's just me.
I agree with you, I think if there's a way we can get this via the taxes, that, um, people are paying now, it would be sure nice if we could do it that way.
Do you have to sign any kind of a contract, I mean, are you locked in for a year, two years, five years, or anything with them, I mean, if, if we...
It's monthly, yeah, but it's, it's per call, so, upfront contract, I don't wanna say it's monthly, I don't know a hundred percent, I don't remember that, I don't have a suspension, I don't know, so, but, um, I can figure that out, but...
But you still aren't paying unless you make the phone call.
Correct, correct.
So, even if you sign a one-year contract, if you don't make any phone calls, you don't, you don't get charged anything.
As far as I understand it, yes. It's a great communication tool, especially for, I mean, not just information and things, but types of city emergencies, I think they can be invaluable, you know, I'm not sure how long it takes those things to go out, you know, if it's, if something happens immediately, or if it's something that can happen, it takes more time for those, but...
I would assume they go on pretty quick.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
It'd be very similar, I believe, to the school, and I think the biggest thing is if something happens over a weekend or something, you have to communicate amongst each other to get a message out, especially to me, if it's not very business-wise, okay?
Yeah, trying to keep all stonks in the mayor's, you know, take merit.
I agree, so it's not a problem, you are... Sort of be me and Mrs. Mayor.
When I'm not with the line, I'm...
That's exactly it, that's what I said. Acting mayor and Mrs. Mayor, we have it.
Right now, we have access in them.
That's what I'm saying, the authority got it covered.
Obviously, just approve it and get it over.
I make a motion, we go ahead, and sign up for the one call now and get that ball rolling, 'cause I have feeling we're gonna have to run it a little soon, I know.
It'll be a process, I mean, we're gonna have to look at how many months out before we...
I know. But at least you can start it.
Yeah, let's get it started, there's a motion on the floor from Stephanie, can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Don, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Um, we have our city of Pierce audit update, would you have something?
No, no, I'm just asking Scott, he's gonna go do that through the electric.
The one call.
Just one call, just start logging people in, is that how you order it? Good. Toby, in regards to the audit, um, that's just FYI.
Just an FYI, yeah.
Don't come ask for anything extra on the eighth and ninth, 'cause they're gonna be crappy. Usually, I...
I think they're gonna be crappy, talk to the auditor.
And then probably expect a meeting that first week in March, I believe they usually come, um, sometime around the fourteenth of March, so I'm thinking, they usually come around that time.
You know, they're just contemplating that, so you're gonna have a really long day that day, okay? Okay.
Okay, next item on our agenda was the resolution, this resolution basically, um, gives support to local government aid, um, Gina, do you kinda wanna read through this, uh, resolution?
Sure. Resolution is part of increasing local government aid in the two thousand sixteen legislative session, whereas local government aid is a critical need for our city, and whereas LGA provides funding to restrain property taxes on homeowners and businesses, and whereas LGA provides for basic services such as public safety, infrastructure, and fire protection, and whereas the legislature and state agencies have imposed unfunded mandates upon local cities, including increased pension requirements, and expensive wastewater, infrastructure costs, among other mandates, and whereas, an LGA increase would help the city of Pierce continue its current and future needs of city staffing, maintain secure funds for the city's general fund, continue necess- necessary city projects, keep the city's levy at a responsible percent, whereas no omnibus tax bill was passed by the two thousand fifteen legislature, thus freezing the LGA appropriation, therefore, it be resolved that the city of Pierce supports an increase in the base appropriation for local government aid of forty-five point five million effective for aid payable in two thousand seventeen, and urges adoption of this proposal by the House and Senate. Be it for, for the result that a copy of this resolution be sent to the following, legis- the legislators representing the city of Pierce, Speaker of the House, Representative Kurt Dowd, Senate Majority Leader, Senator Tom Ock, House Tax Chair Representative Greg Davids, Senate Tax Chair Senator Rod Skoll, and Governor Mark Dayton.
Very good, Gina, can we get a motion to approve, uh, the resolution?
Let's call it, uh, resolution zero one one.
Zero one one?
One one two zero one six.
Great, zero one 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 two zero one six, dash, oh. Can I know under your packets, this is Sam Moore, what's his handle?
Okay, uh, we want to get this signed and actually send it back in, was that, uh...
I'll make a motion that we, uh, adopt the resolution.
Hold on a second, Mike, was that, uh, something?
So this is communicated between cities in Morrison County?
Is there one general one, we don't, we wouldn't send this back in, is that what?
I, I believe that we would send it as a whole, as far as I understood, I was not at that meeting, um, but...
Why don't you find out, yeah, if I need to sign, uh, Gina needs to sign, uh, regular.
Correct, yes, so this is, I just wanna make sure it goes to you guys.
Mike, do you have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do, we authorize Gina and the mayor to sign the appropriate paperwork for the, uh, resolution.
Motion on the floor by Mike.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Don, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Staff, cable, access.
Yes, I just gotta find the right people, 'cause I know there's a couple people here on that board.
Mike and Don.
Oh, God.
We are.
We are.
I just gotta, but you know, I've heard from a couple people who like to watch the city council meetings and things on cable access, that it's gone, it disappeared.
It's not working, it's not working.
It's, there you go, so, if you didn't know, I was telling you, but you know, so...
No, we do, we know it's not.
No, we do, we know it's not.
I thought you were wanting to pay to advertise some commercials or something.
Yeah, no.
That's what I like to do at some point, but.
No.
No, with, uh, channel access is now, we're trying to get mid-continent here.
Okay.
Um, it, I, it works without someone, and it, you can hear the sound, we not see the video, vice versa, so it's back and forth, but.
Is it a camera issue, or?
The question, OX.
What is it?
P.
Correct.
I just, and just so you know, people really do listen to much.
I know they do, I hear the comments a lot.
I scroll through it once in a while, I mean, just to see.
I hear comments a lot, but we have to, we have a council meeting, and it's not there, I, I usually get a comment or two out in the, in the public about it, so, yeah, let's try and get on that, make sure that, uh, we get that booked up.
So you know, you know it's down.
I'll just keep all these recorded, so that once it's up and running, we can keep everybody happy.
Kerry's been working on it, I just, we have to do this stuff, I don't know, that's good.
Department reports.
Bobby, you always got your thing going on?
Couple of little things, yeah.
Just wanted to let the public know, skate hearings are open, we finally got enough ice on them to cover the ground, so, just gotta keep slowly adding, so we can get, build up a little more, yeah. Um, and then, a few meetings ago, Todd Premesberger, I presented an issue on the streetlight, and he added this property on Peter Haven.
Yeah.
Uh, we met as, uh, as electrical committee tonight, and talked about that, and kind of the history on that, the city used to own that piece of property, where the light shines on, so. As a committee, we just felt the city really doesn't have any property back there to light up, and being this is on private property, there's no reason the city should spend any money on that light, so.
He, if he decides he doesn't want the light, he can play ball, ball, whatever he wants to do.
Yeah, and then, I guess, going forward, too, I can make sure there's no other lights like that in town, addressed on this, just same lights.
Sure.
And that's all I had.
Thanks, Bobby. Scott?
I don't have any, Toby.
Okay, sounds good, Treasury report?
Our checkbook balance, balanced with the statement on twelve thirty-one, was one million, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. And like I spoke to you briefly before the meeting, I'm gonna really review what we have as far as money, and decide if we want to need a CD, or if we want to hold it in the checking.
Okay, sounds good, thanks, Linda. Claims, uh, anybody's looking at the total amount of the claims, uh.
There's new sheets on desk.
No, yeah.
Got updated.
Oh, this was the updated, one oh three, yeah, we were hired, yeah, but we got two months for electrical and, so, yeah.
Yes, we do. So otherwise, we should have been, oh, ten thousand, huh?
Yeah, I think we had one for fifty-seven, eight, the other one for one fifty-five, something like that.
Fifty-five, two, seven, six.
Nobody.
You're doing motion of treasures, right?
Did we motion the treasures report?
No, we didn't.
That's what comes next. No, we didn't.
I make a motion to approve the treasures report.
And I'll second it.
On the floor by Mike, and seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, carried unanimously.
I'll also make a motion to, uh, approve the claims for the one.
Motion on the.
At a grand total of one hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-three cents.
I'll circle that.
Motion made by Mike, and seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously. Anybody have anything else forgot to add to the agenda, speak now, forever hold your peace.
I think I probably have forgotten enough.
All righty, we will need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion on the floor by Gina.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Stephanie, all those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried unanimously, thank you very much, everybody.